At six o'clock, I'm calling this meeting to order, please. Good evening and welcome, everyone. This meeting's being recorded and it will be available on the city YouTube channel.
Yeah.
Council, roll call, please. Please state your name.
Marion.
Dana Wasner.
I'm here.
Tom.
Thank you. Moving on to approval of the consent agenda. Are there any questions on the consent agenda contents?
Has anything come up in the last, it's the last application about Dollar General related to alcohol?
Is there something we should be aware of?
No.
Just asking.
Yes.
Any other questions? Now, are there taking a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion. Second.
On paper?
Hi.
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 Thank you. Perfect timing by the Sheriff's Department. If you step off the podium, you're first on our reports.
All right. My name's Stephanie Tope. Just opened my email and realized that this was happening, so I haven't looked at this at all. January fourteenth. Here's February eleven. Looks like we met hours for January and had ninety calls for service. Sorry, it's cold out, I'm out of breath. Does anyone have any questions, comments, or concerns?
Be especially careful out there tomorrow.
Yeah, yeah, I know. School's canceled, bunch of snowmen gonna come work, so.
Next, the rest of the department reports are available in the council packet. Are there any questions? For any of the department heads on their reports? We will move on. To item number six. Which is a public hearing regarding the rezoning of the Bollin property. Go ahead and open the public hearing. Cynthia, did you receive any comments at City Hall?
I had one resident come in and ask what it was about. I explained it and she understood and thanked me.
Okay, thank you. Chris, you want to offer an explanation to the council?
Yeah. If you guys remember, four years ago, we rezoned four point eleven acres across the intersection here for Bollins, for that dollar fresh part, which ended up back now. Bollins never reported it. So it was never shown on their quarters site or assessed their site as a rezoned property, a separate parcel. I talked to them, they didn't want them to wish for it to be there, so we're just reversing our steps on this. To make it agricultural again, all one parcel.
Are there any questions from anyone in the audience or online? Or from the council in this center? Not hearing any questions, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. We'll move on to item number seven. Which is adoption of ordinance one thirteen, lending the zoning map and zoning districts.
Motion. Second.
You, roll call on this one, please. Hi.
Hi. Hi. Hi.
Thank you. Do you want to consider suspending the rules for the next two meetings?
Motion versus spend.
Second. Roll call, please. Hi.
Hi. Hi. Hi.
Thank you. And do you want to consider final passage on adoption?
Final passage. Second.
Roll call, please, Tom.
Hi. Hi.
Thank you. Move on to item number eight, which is another public hearing regarding the rezoning of city property. Cynthia, did we receive any public comments on this?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay, we will open the public hearing. Chris, you want to offer an explanation on it?
Yeah, this is the Masonic Temple that was taught, grads that were returning to Park Lot. We never did rezonate to public use conservation. That's what we're here to do tonight with this ordinance.
Anyone in the audience or online have any questions? Council, any questions or discussion? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing. We'll move on to item number nine.
Motion for the majority.
Thank you. Second. Roll call, please. Hi.
Hi. Hi. Hi.
Wanting to consider a motion to suspend the rules for the next three weeks.
Motion to suspend. Second.
Roll call, please, Tom.
Hi. Hi. Hi.
Thank you. And finally, a motion for the final passage of adoption.
Second.
Roll call, please, Tom.
Hi. Hi. Hi.
Hi. Thank you. Okay, we have one more public hearing item number ten regarding an updated zoning map. Any comments received?
No.
No, Cynthia? So I'll open the public hearing. Chris, again.
There's some updating the map with many changes, including these two we just made. It'll be up to date through today.
Thank you. Any questions from the audience, anyone online or the council? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing. We'll move on to item number eleven. Which is, consider a motion to introduce a, who the first reading of this revised zoning map.
Motion about data maps. Second.
Roll call, please.
All right. All right. All right. Second. When does, suspend the second, third reading, or speed this up?
Excuse me?
Motion to suspend.
It's not a rate.
Second reading. Yes, it is.
Need a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Hi. Hi. Hi.
Hi. Thank you. And we do need a motion for final passage.
Okay. Second.
Hi.
All right. Hi. Hi. Thank you.
Item number twelve is resolution regarding library compensation. Kathy, are you going to comment on this?
Oh, the library board decided to, the Clinton City Council had recommended new three point five percent rates.
Did you say three point five, Kathy, could hear? Yes. Across the board. Any questions for Kathy on that? Okay. This is a resolution, so do I have a motion?
Motion to approve the public compensation.
Thank you. Need a second? Second? Roll call, please. Hi.
Hi. Hi. Hi.
Actually, when we receive a no vote, we ask for a reason.
Same reason I voted no on all the other ones that don't believe in straight percentage increases, and I never have.
We do not ask a reason for a no vote. We ask a reason for an abstention.
Well, I'll give you my reason anyway.
Thank you, Mike. Okay. Motion there. Item number thirteen. Discussion on possible motion concerning the library expansion and additional considerations. Are you going to introduce this question, or are you?
Yes.
Would you like to do this?
Yes, Mrs. Mayor. This is just asking for council guidance on two things. If you can scroll down a bit, if you're able to do that. Most of the stuff is already there, but we had a meeting between the Library Foundation, a member of the Library Board, the mayor, Cynthia, and myself. I need your guidance on two things. One, the foundation, whether you want the city to purchase the lot adjacent to the library, because they want to do their expansion, but in order to do that, we need to expand it. The, from what I understand, the bank bought it at one hundred fifty thousand. Based on last conversation, they're not willing to compromise on that, except for the portion that goes to the Legion. So what I need to know is, A, do you want the city to purchase it? Which, that's option one. Number two, well, I guess my first question is, do you even want us to even expand the library? Is that something you want to do? Is my first question. And then if you do want to do it, how do you want to raise funds for it? One, we do have some funding available. Two, if you want to purchase the land outright using city funds, or you can, or you can task the Library Foundation to raise the money. Then the second decision, if you decide to go along with this, along with the first one, is they propose doing a right of first refusal, so that what if you want the Library Foundation or the city to purchase it, the right of first refusal means we have first dibs on it. So I need a series of decisions today, so I know which way to go in my negotiations with the library, the Library Foundation, etc. In that sense.
I would just add a little bit more background, and maybe it was in the written, is that the foundation is, was participating in negotiations with the bank about whether to buy it or write a first refusal. We found out about and said, you probably need to put a stop to that and have the city involved in the negotiation, if it's, if the city's going to purchase it. If you want the foundation to purchase it at some point, whether it's now or later, then that's a different thing, so.
Yep. The foundation's proposal is if they do raise the money, they'll give it to the city after they purchase it. Problem is, we'll raise the period between having the money and raising it, then having, we don't, they wanted to do a right of first refusal either way, so nobody else makes it while they're raising it.
I thought we talked about purchasing this a few months ago.
That would be my, I would say the city should buy it, and then irregardless of what happens with the library, we own the property and we have control of it moving forward. It's, I don't think it's a, given that we have the property adjacent, but I think that makes more sense. If we decide to purchase it, then do we, we purchase it less the twelve percent portion that they're going to let the Legion Hall use as a driveway? Is that going to be right adjacent to the Legion Hall? I mean, I don't follow that either. You know, they're just pressed for thirty-two.
Well, that's a later legal consideration, though. Or a split of plan. If that's the case, I will, if that's the case, then I would say you tell the bank that you'll take it for one thirty-two. They will need to do all the legal things, let them go ahead and do, because that has to be recorded and due to split.
No.
And address that to us.
May I request a motion? For that decision.
Don't you think that would be a discussion?
Yeah. Okay.
Otherwise, we have to buy it, and we have to spend the money to do all that stuff.
My thought is the first right of refusal makes sense to do that, but the purchase, right, or purchase the lot or not purchase, I think depends on the price. It's a little excessive. Did you say they bought it for one fifteen?
Yes.
It had, it didn't have the building on it, they had to do it down.
I thought the owner had to do that, yeah. It was part of their requirement, because it was considered a.
They had to bait it, right?
Yeah. How that late? Yeah, I think they didn't purchase it until after all of that had been taken care of.
Can you explain the twelve percent concession for the portion going to the Legion? So that's where the plan can be done, and that twelve percent.
That twelve percent.
Is going to the Legion for parking.
That's correct.
I don't think it's parking, I think it's a driveway.
Drive back. Right. Backside.
Into the.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Zero.
Do you know if the driveway is on the west side or the north side?
The whole presented map.
The west side, so it's right next to the Legion, then?
Yeah. Just some insurance.
Okay, no, that's west, east, and that way.
Yeah. Otherwise, you went through that house.
Yeah. That was shown last month. Will it be both?
They. Definitely.
Twelve percent or now, coming off Main Street.
Yeah. Which there really isn't a regular day now.
Right.
No. So. Been on final proposals, one hundred and thirty-two. Maybe all the league will work, work really good.
I made that motion.
I need a motion as to who's going to purchase the lot and how. The city's going to purchase the lot.
And we're determining the rate in this motion?
At one thirty-two, based on what he is, or what is listed here. At one thing, at one thirty-two, and then the bank has to deal with separating the.
Unless you wanted to word it back to exceed what we do.
Well, I get that they paid hundred fifty, but they paid, was the assessed rate on it?
Oh, the tax assessed rate, I don't have the exact on my head, but I think it was around forty.
Yeah, so they way over paid for it. Yeah. Right.
So, do you want to designate who's negotiating, and does that person have negotiating power if the bank says no at one thirty-two? Do you want that in your motion as well?
You have a motion, they're set on thirty-two, and then they reply.
The bank does, yeah, the bank does.
So procedurally, we have to go through that motion first. You say yes or no?
I'll second that.
Okay, so, there's a motion and a second on the floor. Dustin, you want to maybe just read that, so we're sure what it is?
Which part?
The motion. Do you want to repeat it or Cynthia?
A motion by Wayne Wright, second by Nury, to have the city purchase the lot that we're discussing, I didn't put in the address, for a hundred and thirty-two thousand from the bank, with the bank doing the legal expense to split off for the Allegiant property.
Does council want to include a right of refusal on there, or do you want to just outright purchase immediately?
Well, this is his offer. This isn't Fairfax's offer, this is his offer, so is a first right of refusal necessary?
That was something that they, that the Library Foundation requested.
If we never need the property, then we wouldn't have spent hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars on it.
I would just buy it to avoid the chances someone coming in there and way overshooting it and then doing something crazy.
Right, first refusal, even if they come in at two hundred thousand, we get it at one thirty-two.
I would just purchase it. That's me.
Okay.
Is that how right of first refusal works? Because you're guaranteed a price. I thought it was a, they came with a two hundred thousand, you can either match it, or you can walk away from it, but you, you don't get a one thirty-two.
That's what I thought, that.
I believe that, that.
But that's, that's our right of first refusal.
Our realtor agrees, and I talk about.
My understanding, as a Realtor, having done a few right of refusals, is we would have, we would be first place in line to purchase the property at our negotiated value. And then if someone else came in and said, we want to purchase this property at any given price, they would come to us first and say, you have the first right to purchase this property, because it would have to be written into our first right of refusal. We have a first right of refusal to purchase this property at this price. If someone else comes, they come to us, and we have the first right to say, yes, we will move forward with the contract now, we can't dilly-daddle at that point, or no, go ahead and sell it to someone else. I mean, it very much depends how your right of refusal is written, but we would say we have the first right of refusal at that price.
So basically, the bank's just going to hold it for one thirty-two.
So we do not know that. We haven't presented a first right of refusal to the bank. We have said we felt maybe that was the best way for us to attempt to move forward, and we would have to present it to the bank to see if they would agree to that.
Okay.
Yep.
Any other questions? Have a motion, a second on the floor.
I, I would say, before we vote on that, this is my opinion, if we're going to purchase this, and I know we can all floor it at a later date, if the whole library expansion goes, you know, south. But this kind of locks us in, we talked about this the other month when we were talking, oh my God, that was five days ago. That shows you how much. On the CIP, if we get this library, then there's a possibility we're not getting a second library behind Falmouth, down the road, so it's the Library Board and the council wants to consider this our library of the short, medium, and long term. And I would say just first sit outright, don't pick one. And what was the negotiation process that's happened so far?
Right now, we am just presenting to you the initial offer that was given to me by the Library Foundation and the bank.
I don't think necessarily, I think it was a discussion.
Yeah, so right now, there will, he's willing to give us a commission for the portion that goes to the. And that would bring the price down to one thirty-two.
Obviously, none of us came back and said.
No. I'm not going to count it without talking to y'all first. I wanted to even see if you would be willing to even entertain the possibility before I started negotiations. So this is a starting point.
Any other questions for Dustin? Have a motion and second on the floor. Need a vote? On paper?
Hi.
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 One name?
Why?
Move us on item number fourteen, discussion regarding fire department compensation.
I spoke this, Spanky, today, and I typed up his thoughts on fire department payroll. He's here.
So the whole thing about the wage for the fire department to get a raise, we're not really in it for the money.
Doesn't that affect the other things? Like, if we raise that, doesn't it?
Well, if we take more pay, then it turns out of our budget. Unless the city wants to put that much money in the budget to make our wages go up, then nobody will turn it down, but we would rather. Not in.
Really.
Oh, say that. But we don't want to take money out of our, away from buying new equipment, keeping everything updated. Just to make another five dollars a call. Most of the people, well, I shouldn't say most, no one got on the fire department because they thought they were going to be paid. So, you know, we just volunteer because we vote what we do, three sixty-five, right? All I've talked to Cynthia about is I would like to see some of our officer to get paid more, just because of the work that they do. With the training, all the paperwork, all the stuff behind the scenes that nobody really has any idea that has to happen, but it has to be done. The stuff that Lynn and Brian do with our ISO fire rating. Brandon and Marcus now are going to have to travel to Benton County to the EMS meeting for us, in order for us to receive that twenty plus thousand dollar tax money that we're going to get from Benton County now for EM, it's for EMS training or product link, but it's still twenty thousand dollars that we get to use to better train, equip, and maybe buy internal some. Anyway, did you, do they have the numbers on there?
Yeah, this document.
So that was, as a paying increase, that would be my own make.
So the officer currently make, the regular officer's five hundred a year, and he's suggesting to go to a thousand. And then he wants to add the Benton County EMS officer position for a thousand, for each, and there'd be two of those officers. And then the EMS officer for Fairfax and the state reporting officer both now make a thousand, and he thought they should maintain the five hundred bump above the regular officer, so those would both go to fifteen. And then he's not recommending any changes to his pay, or the per call pay, or the call reporting pay.
And you can cut mine there. But that's all I would recommend.
It's been four, over four years since this pay structure has changed. Nothing has changed.
Right.
Now I've seen today's world, this being a voluntary group. Paywork gets more involved, which means you're doing that stuff on the side, which is what initially generated all of this, my opinion. And you add the EMS that can generate additional twenty thousand a year. Those two people, only two people, would generate that twenty thousand dollar taxes to go towards the fire department. Rather than spreading it out amongst the officers and, and fire chief.
So if you make his recommend, they recommended changes, that's the lines that we change on the resolution.
And if you get right down to it, you have a whole year to think about it, because when we get paid once a year. You just, and if you don't do it, no one's going to lose any sleep over it, and we're not going to stop doing what we do, but I talked to Tom about this, and we had a pretty long discussion. It's been a crease, we don't. I mean, I, when I first became fire chief, way back when Mary Ann was just a kid, we actually gave up our entire fire pay for one year, just so we could get money here, because the city didn't have any money, so. Back then, we'd make it five dollars. And then we went all the way down to two.
Top costed.
Long time. You remember them days? So anyway, that's, you know, doesn't anything that has to be decided tonight, but that would be my recommendation.
Any other questions for the chief?
On the agenda, for consideration for dissolution. Hopefully, no further questions.
And I just want to throw one thumb in your ear, just so we have a few months to think about this, because we're going to have to make a decision probably in March. There's not a whole lot of money left in the fireworks, but I was going to say fireworks. Just like, you know, there's seven thousand dollars in there, we usually spend twelve to fourteen. So you're going to have a really little show. Or you're gonna have a long show with really little shells.
The other thing we need to tell the vendor.
That's what I mean, that's all we need to know to order, but anyway, just throwing that out for the public, so we know that.
When do you have to know to get an order?
Oh, March would always be good.
So John will need to address that.
Yeah, the sooner the better, but.
When you send out your donation request, thank you, Dr. Smith, let yourself.
That goes for next year.
Yeah, they always just spend what they already have in their account.
Whatever you gain this year from your slickly leather that goes to next year.
Next year.
Is there something we could put in the facts, just to generally save that?
We do, people are probably mad at us because we've been lighting them off in the rain, but we really don't have a choice sometimes.
And last year, we sold out the nuisance letters prior, which affected significantly.
So, yeah, I just, you know, I don't know what Tom wants to do, or what USA many wants to do, or he, I've been USA days again, I don't even.
How much General spends?
About twelve, fourteen. But usually, we, we usually get a lot more in. And you know, you, we used to walk through the crowds of people to beg them to give us a dollar. Nobody carries cash anymore. And the, after the new park was built the way it was, there was no more one gate in and one gate out, but you could keep the people together. Now it's just a swarm, so, you know.
So you're saying you need a Fairfax Fire Department fireworks game account?
Well, you need someone to run it.
Which a couple members have talked about that.
Yeah, people have talked about it.
How do you make it legal to do so?
But it's just food for thought. Thought I'd bring that up.
You could, you could probably do something like that, where just have to, the money would have to come to us in the account.
Right. Which is it, all the money from the fireworks goes to the state.
Like a GoFundMe page?
Yeah, if it has Benmore or something that you can get by with doing, that'd be probably something that's good. Which the last couple years, they'll keep telling you, they keep, every year they go, they just, it's but each year, we keep finding a little bit less, less, less views, and then telling you, sooner or later, have the city's gonna have, say, guess, or contribute to it, or?
I guess, but there is tax dollars to buy fireworks. It's always been one hundred percent donation every years.
So Spanky, are you saying that, that if somebody was, came up and said right now to you, said, I've got five thousand dollars for this year's fire, could you take it and that'd be your twelve?
Heck, yeah.
Okay, alright.
You know, Joe, for the last two years, we've been using the following year's money to cover the twelve year.
Okay.
Or part of it, I should say. The last year, we took like ten thousand dollars in. And we had to use three of it, I don't even know if it was ten, but we had to use part of that to pay last year's.
Sure.
And basically, we would have to do the same thing this year. Whatever the mainly produced, we would have to use that to buy this year's fireworks. Because there's no way we could. And then next year, you're gonna have even less.
I would probably.
So this could be, realistically, this could be the last year financially that.
Since two thousand nineteen, it's been eating away at everything we got.
But, you know, maybe we don't need to have USA days anymore.
And the other negative on that.
But you can't wear a costume of hundred degrees weather.
Worst time he said that, going.
I was just gonna say, let's just go ahead and, uh, have the city give them eight thousand dollars to bring them up to fifteen, and then they can start fundraising next year already.
This is not a topic on tonight's agenda, but so we can't take any.
Yeah, you can decide this whenever. I just wanted to know where we're at.
With that saying, level two, right now, we're, we're starting to get obsolete, outdated, bad. We're kinda using our equipment with another guy's equipment, the best equipment. That's gonna be another.
So the budget's on tonight's agenda, though, so can't, we'll switch to the budget.
We can talk at the budget.
Yes, so we can visit this at the budget area.
Yeah. We're straying away.
I tried mine on the pick-up law court. I know, that money's gone.
Alright, so the topic that is on the agenda at the moment is fire department compensation changes. So do I have a motion to approve the proposed change?
Motion.
Second, roll call, please.
Aye, 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 aye.
Aye. Alright, item number sixteen, change order on the fire truck order. So let's, let's talk about that as well.
Okay. So, when we spec out the truck, we gave you a price, how much the truck is. There was a ten thousand dollar contingency in this bid. So, we had a change order for, I don't know, Dustin, what was it, fifty-two hundred dollars or something like that? And then another one for nine hundred, which we expected that you're gonna get when you do that kinda stuff. So the actual dollar amount of the purchase of the truck has not changed. These are just change orders with the amount that it costs, but it doesn't exceed the original amount that we proposed when we got permission to buy the truck. Does that make sense?
Any questions? On change order. Very none? Intertain a motion to approve that change order? Motion.
Second.
Roll call, please, Ryan.
Aye.
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 Thank you. Item number seventeen, discussion of possible for Eric Unstruckin to obtain building department certification.
Yeah, so the fireworks budget. Eric's been helping out with the, um, with the rental inspections. He brings the perspective of not only the fire department, he's also a master plumber. Uh, I'm talking to Eric, he's interested in building my shoes when I'm on vacation or in other places, so. Um, proposing that we get him certified. I mean, he's already a master plumber, you're gonna need that, but, uh, yeah, get him so many certifications, he can go, okay. That's okay with council. Eric's also, I think, seven years younger than me, so there's that aspect of it. I don't want to go through it.
Any questions for Chris?
Do it. There's asked me, motion to do it.
All in favor?
Aye, aye, aye. Thank you, council.
I might want to stay there for a minute, Chris. The next, item number eighteen is the, the payroll twenty-eight E.
Oh, yeah.
Are there changes there, Chris?
Just the amount. Based on his, um, pay increase as of January.
Questions on the revised twenty-eight U S thirty of payroll?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Aye, 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 aye.
Thank you. Item number nineteen is to set up public hearing on the whole plans, but based on former contract and estimate for warrant supply, level number four improvements. That public hearing would be March eleventh, correct, Cynthia?
Yeah.
I need a motion to set that public hearing, so.
Second.
Roll call, please, Tom.
Aye, 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 aye.
Item number twenty. Um, we've been working with the Nips family on, um, property purchase agreement. Shane is here, are you gonna talk a little bit about it?
I was gonna talk about the class project.
Oh, you were gonna talk about it? We're studying our public.
We're also filing with the city.
Aye.
We're also filing, we're all coming with the city, we're putting out the bids. This project, you want me to drop in that?
Sure, just bring it. It's on the paper. Sorry, I didn't realize you were talking about the other one.
Well, I just wanted to make sure that council understands we're, we're putting the project out of bids tomorrow for that project as well, so. That was mentioned, so just cover that. The Nips is part of the West Central Road Bridge Intersection Project. And, uh, we're working to acquire the, right away, the easement acquisitions for that, and Nips is one of the partners.
So is the right-of-way the smaller triangle, the easement, the third one?
Yeah, so the right-of-way, yeah, smaller triangle right up next to the intersection, and then temporary easements for a temporary drive. They'll have network these corner of the property, um, while we're doing the improvements at the intersection.
And the status is that they find off on everything?
How many total property owners are there?
So there's the Nips, and Bard Connor on the south side. And Bard Connor's, that's just a temporary construction easement, there's no right-of-way acquisition. So I don't know. You know, where that one's standing, or where that one man's at, but on the north side, we have right-of-way and temporary construction permanent easements, and that's Ron Brecht. On the west side of the creek, and on the east side of the creek is, uh, the city of Fairfax has a small, small parcel, where we extended the sewer up to our nice numerous years ago. So obviously, there's no negotiation, but we do have to establish right-of-way on the city's parcel. And then just east of the city's parcel is Weiskopf's. I'm in bench traffic, is, uh, Weiskopf property. And then Lon Hilton has two lots just east of Weiskopf's. Big riggers and, uh, Stinger, yeah, Stinger. So those two properties, uh, yeah. It's westernly, hillly, westernly property, we have right-of-way construction easement, on the street property, we have easement, permanent. It's the first one that basically didn't even sign, and everyone, we, we, mortgage police, but.
So it's all been presented, everybody else just waiting their.
So the north properties, there's appraisal process. So there's an appraiser that is working to assess most properties, and then we get that finished up, that'll be presented.
Can you tell us what, what the deal is with the trees? Does he want us to remove trees? I'm talking about on Ron.
On Brex. He's, he's requested the city relocate his driveway and remove trees that are to the west of his driveway, and then relocate his driveway.
It's those big trees?
Yeah, they are big trees, and it's not necessary we should talk to them, but that's.
Why does he want to move his driveway? We know.
He wants to move it further to a western property line, so I don't know if that gives him more trouble.
And none of those property owners have received any appraisals yet, so we're just in the early basis of conversation. Shane, if the council makes a motion here, are we still awaiting the mortgage release, or did that come through?
No, it's the way. There is contract language, Mr. Mayor, that, um, we, and that's a picture of D S memory. Um, there is contract language there, states that we will not execute till all the documents will be distributed.
So we're, sounds like we're waiting for a couple of things that we don't anticipate any problems with, right, Dustin? But, um, rather than wait another month for council to, to see and approve that moving forward, we thought we'd put it on uh, with that contingency.
Okay, so we can approve the subject to receiving all the Brex documents?
Yeah, it says right here. Proven as contingent upon the seller's completely required paperwork. So. You second, please?
Second.
Roll call?
Aye, 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 aye.
Okay, now we have a series of procedural updates, starting with item number twenty-one. City of Fairfax has one twenty-five plan. Yeah, um, so our insurance company sends us an updated one twenty-five plan. Um, it had, um, of course, well-marked included in it this time. And so when we get an updated one, we adopt this resolution, adopting this one twenty-five plan. Um, which refers to part of the IRS code that, um, you can do the, um, pre-tax deductions. Any questions for Cynthia on that? Not entertain a motion to set that update? Second. Roll call, please, Tom.
Aye, 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 aye.
Number twenty-two, approve the revised agenda and meeting policy. Uh, this, you saw that briefly last month, Dustin, you wanna talk about that a little bit?
Sure, I didn't read, I didn't overhaul everything. The only thing that I have done is just updated them to account for the city administrative position. So all of these assume that it's just, and some of them is balancing the responsibilities that the mayor and I have in some of these processes. Um, and it's just, all of them are accounting for the addition of city administrator. I also have some language just to try to streamline it. But I didn't change the heart, I didn't change what, for the most part, I kept everything the same.
I do appreciate the red line.
Well, yet Cynthia deserves a lot of credit for helping with that.
Any questions specifically on the agenda and meeting policy updates? If not, do you guys want a discussion on these as a whole, or do you want to vote through one by one? Or do you wanna, how do you wanna handle these?
Well, we have to vote on each individually, so. John, we sense there is a resolution required.
Okay, the one on the fourth, agenda and meeting policy?
My question is, what the agenda meeting policy is, as I read through the moves. I look at how the agenda is proposed and any changes, and the, and the documentation in there is between the mayor and the city administrator. And there's not much verbiage in their discussion about city council having any. Obviously, at the beginning of every meeting, we can consent to the agenda, but as the agenda is brought up, it seems like the council members have to ask, act as if they're a resident in order to have something added, or re, well, added, right? And I don't see that in there. I see that as a possible. I think the council needs to be intertwined in that as well. There's a lot of changes in here as I read this. It's, it's hard to understand, not much changes, but I, when I look at this, I, I don't know what the, other than adding the city administrator, which I understand. But I don't know what was different in there that there's a lot of red lines through this to make, to make changes.
What kind of verbiage did you want me to add to?
Well, I, I don't know, it's hard and, and all going on to all the other resolutions that are coming up down the line, but I don't know what that verbiage is. I'm gonna be honest, I'm not an expert on how that is, but that's my general overall thoughts, to have something in there to where a council, but other than having an administrator in there, if it's worded right now to where the council is kind of the odd person out, then I think we need to work on that.
Sure.
But as far as if there's some verbiage in here that that is okay, then the council is. Then.
I'd say add into the number one, the agenda procedures, where after government agencies, it's until.
My question would be, do you want more than one council member to be able to add to it?
My question would be, do you want more than one council member to be able to add to it, or does it have to be a couple? And the reason I suggest that is. If you're allowing just one council member to add and buy.
Well, the legislative process is council can legislate something or have us draft it and then it goes to the mayor to add it. That's the way, that was my thi- my thinking anyway, but if you want, I can add some verbiage to where account stating something that council can add. Council that, you know, just specify council that has the rights to propose agenda posts or legislation.
If I understand it, the way the. Procedure stand now, council is kind of an odd one out.
Why do you feel that way, Tom? Are you talking about the, because Cynthia sent an email out saying, asking for your agenda topics? And that, I believe that already has council listed in the current and he just capitalized it. Oh, no, that just says city council agenda, but somewhere in here it says that that is sent to council.
Yeah, it's number.
American Council of State.
Oh, yeah, right here.
As you say, number nine, well, number nine also has.
And then number eleven is, it takes two, if it was already decided on, two from the prevailing side to reconsider. And then, yeah, and number nine says the city administrator may appeal to the council to add the item if the mayor declines.
And I think that was part of the area. Number nine is where I was, I had a lot of confusion on. To where that should all be intertwined, it should be there of the three entities. Should be able to add or subtract. From the agenda.
So you. Would like, for example, under number one, you would like specifically city. In the list of people who may submit. Agenda items and then further clarify under nine that in the event something is not put on there, that. It already states the city administrator come to the city council. But you also want inability for one, the majority of the city council? Or how many to get an agenda item put on there?
Well, it's tough how many, you know, obviously more than. Council members can be talking amongst themselves in groups, obviously. But yeah, that's the general line of what the gist of. Of what I'm trying to get at.
So on number one, from understanding you, Tom, this is to add some verbiage to. Number one, the city council also can add stuff to the agenda, something on, but the mayor's that by statute.
Yes, no, I mean.
That's just for request, yeah.
All right. I can, uh, so number one, add verbiage.
First times in our meeting where we're talking, we asked to place up on the next month's agenda.
Okay. I wasn't intended, I guess the assumption was. You presume you have the right to close legislation, but I'll I'll make sure to specify that, number one, yeah, all right. Everyone else is in agreement with that, we can table it till next meeting.
Thank you. So is number one, the only paragraph that needs revised?
Well, that that's my other question is. To to make sure Tom's happy that, and whomever else, not just Tom, but like me as well, is there. It's the agenda set by the mayor and the city administrator, or are you saying you want some sort of? How would I put it?
Addition, subtraction.
Ability for the city council and and I'm just gonna throw a random like, I'll say this is my favorite whipping post there is chickens. Chickens with fireworks taken to them. Maybe I want to talk about chickens with fireworks taken to them. And the mayor's like, no, I'm thick of talking about chickens and fireworks. I don't think this is chickens with fireworks. He said, no. And he's like, I don't know, we don't need to talk about chickens and fireworks. Then, no, actually, that's kind of a good idea. I do want to talk about chickens with fireworks strapped to their backs. And she's like, no, that's stupid, but we're like, no, we both think it's great. Is is that what you're looking for, an ability for us to talk about it?
Number nine. So do you want to have it be two people have to have consensus to get it added?
That's that's what I'm getting at.
As opposed to one person pushing a.
And the re- and the reason I'm asking it should be more than one, because if the, if every month I go, you know what, I'm gonna talk about any things that just really drive me, grind my gears. No one else wants to talk about, but. You know. I'm gonna talk about it. Everybody's gonna have a ruined evening until I get to talk about.
I'd say that that majority of council will.
Majority or two, I mean, I'd like to think it's two people.
Are you getting majority though?
Yeah, you can't have a majority without having a meeting.
Well, you can call people and then.
No, that's a walk in.
You totally won't call people. Where's the owl?
And are you talking about just adding or what about?
Adding, yes.
What about deleting an item?
That that's, that's why I think we're talking about this now.
Well, I think your meeting was, uh, number ten or eleven, wasn't it? If. Number eleven doesn't talk about deleting an item by making a motion.
Ten.
Ten.
Eleven is about bringing something up that's already been discussed and decided on.
You may vote to adjust the agenda, which in my mind includes deleting it, but I can specify if that is what you want.
So it is, it does say in there including removing. Items before it gets posted.
No.
No, this is at the beginning.
The mayor controls the agenda until the introduction to an actual meeting, so the only other way you could do that is. To request a, to call special meeting, however I statute code directs us to do that.
Makes sense for two people with with one, I think, explanation. Two people kind of works because. If Nick and I are talking about exploding chickens. And then Mary Ann, Dan and Tom at the beginning of the meeting. Can call for a vote, go, I don't want to talk about exploding chickens, and then it's a simple majority to remove slash remove.
So two people to add something to the agenda prior to Friday's deadline. Add some verbiage there.
Thursday's then.
Thursday, thank you.
That. That the mayor declined to add? That's, that's what we talked about, yeah.
So I'll send out, uh, I will ask about, yeah, I will send out a draft to y'all before March's meeting. So please give me feedback if you don't like the way it's worded, so that way when when um it is presented, we can just get, go through it and get.
I mean, that would have been changed, Mary Ann, is that?
Yeah, that's right.
Tom?
Yep.
All right, so that item is tabled, there's no further discussion. Number twenty three is the purchasing policy. Cynthia or Dustin, whoever wants to talk about that.
We did, Cynthia did ask the auditors regarding this, and I don't believe there was any changes, was there?
They didn't have any problem with the way it was.
I did have, I did add gift cards procedure.
What what does gift cards?
Because the library does purchase gift cards every year for kids and stuff, and so Cynthia was concerned to make sure we had a policy in place to protect the city.
So which one are we on? Twenty three, purchasing policy? Oh. What is all the, what is all this stuff under item six? Role of the city. Council, and then it has all these things that used to be on there, and then we've taken them all off.
I think I just re-added them later.
That's the downside of redlining things. So there's a reason why we moved them somewhere else?
But when I see something like that.
I was confused, I was confused by it.
It it it. We had it in the past, and I don't know if the way we had it worded could cause problems, but. I'll use the word of reinventing the wheel, but it doesn't need to be. I'll say red X or or what, other than adding. Gift cards. But. Trying to reinvent the wheel, I don't understand, I don't get why.
So I think this is our confusion with all these items.
Mm-hmm.
Was that we were in the impression you were just gonna add the city administrator verbiage to all these? And instead we got these. Ones that have been working just fine, and they're all completely redlined out and things have been changed and we're like. Well, why is all that necessary when we thought we were just adding? You.
I was attempting to make it flow, that was all. If you want, I can revert back and just add the city administrator verbiage if you want to do that.
Because I I think we would like to see it stay kind of the way it is. And have you add your verbiage to it.
Yep.
Until you get comfortable in kind of how everything works, and then down the road, then we can. Revisit like if these changes need to be made or not. I don't want to make a bunch of changes now, then I don't know. They really didn't need to happen or. Does that make sense?
It does, but I didn't change much other than I I just updated the wording, but if you want, I can revert back.
Does it make sense when I say reinvent the wheel?
Yeah.
We're reinventing this this purchasing policy while they're really adding it and it's just gift cards and.
And that you're right.
I didn't, I I didn't look at it as reinventing, I didn't change any of the concepts, I just reformatted it, I guess.
Yeah.
Yeah, I take it as you. Put yourself in and you can edit the gift cards, so I guess I'm not. Following Mary Ann and Tom what you're saying.
So I guess what I'm saying is Dustin, you've been here six weeks, give or take.
Yep.
Right? To know the inner workings and the why things are worded takes time, you know? Everything is gonna take time and I know. You're you're dialing in, you're, and that's gonna take a while. But when I see something like this, and this is me. Talking, then I wouldn't speak for anybody else, but to overhaul something, I want you to have experience of the city first. The interactions, then to come back. And is that six months, is that in a year? I don't know, I don't put a time trend on that for for it, but to know why. Why we wrote it this way back then. And okay. You have experience now and this is why you think. This needs to be adjusted. Rather than. A lot of red line because it's hard for me to read and to understand what we're trying to do and what's changed. To me, when I see red lines, I see a lot of change, right? I'm a damn gift card city administrator, I get that, but I understand what you're saying. Yes, it's not so.
It's the same stuff, I just reformatted it. I didn't want to change the content. Other than just reworded some things. The amount, when I read it, it's just straight. It's just straight text all the way through the policy, and all I did was just add some labels and reformat it, that's all I did. Minus the gift card, the the meat and potatoes was the gift card and the adding the city administrator, those are the major changes. I just reworded stuff and added labels and stuff like that. But if you don't want me to do that, I'll revert back and just add the city administrators. This is your ballgame, you let me know what you want from me.
Your guys' thoughts are.
It's not, it's it's not hard, I can revert back, I've got the originals. You won't be.
Is your hesitation, Tom, that like? Authority is going through Dustin versus?
No. My my question is just with your knowledge of Fairfax. Why was it written like that? And I appreciate appreciate your go-gettingness, right? I appreciate that. But. Knowledge, I think, is needed first before something is completely rewritten for Fairfax. That that's not right. It explained it very well there. He's got the authority.
Sure.
Yep. To to oppose the draft.
So if you want to table these items, because you're gonna see the same format throughout most of them. So if you want me to table these items and reintroduce them.
So you would have preferred to gain errors, excuse me, Tom, more in. A two-stage thing, step one would have been just adding city administrator. And the tents, that what we have with an updated policy.
City administrator and gift cards.
Yes, and then you're saying after that, what he essentially was doing for the most part was just. We were cleaning up the language.
Yeah, I mean. Purchasing policy in Fairfax is gonna be completely different than any other town, right? And why are they different? Because those towns are different, those cities are different, so. See once how the interworkings of Fairfax go first before. All the rewrites and and things happen. That's my suggestion. That's that's me.
I'm at your pleasure, council, so you tell me what you want, if you want. Because they're all gonna be the same. I just, I didn't rewrite, I didn't re, I didn't change the doc, the re-meaning of them, I was just trying to clear them up. I'm willing to go however you want me to go.
So. One suggestion is for Dustin is for items number. Point two, point three, point four, point five, point six, and then twenty seven, so let him come back. But every, uh, twenty eight's a brand new policy, so you. That's brand new. Twenty two through twenty seven are updates to current policies. Yeah, because like to me, like for example, the purchasing policy, you get down to the very end of it and literally there's. Like almost the last two pages are completely redlined out. So I guess I'm just, I would be more comfortable with just adding him at this point and then maybe looking at these down the road and introducing them. Just seems like a lot of change until we actually really know. I just don't want to approve something to be improving it.
Sure, are you on like twenty eight? In his format or? Order to the.
Um, twenty eight was a lot, I am not gonna lie. He has to approve and he has to monitor and he has to track and you. I don't know if you guys read it, but it it that has nothing to do with, it just was, that policy is just a lot.
Would it make more sense for you guys if he just did a quick add on the old policy?
That's.
And turn around and reword it, and then you guys can. Compare what the words are between the two, okay, without all ready? Would that be easier?
They have that right now.
They do.
In the pack.
Okay.
That's that's where we're saying that it's a lot of change. I don't know if you've seen it.
No, I didn't get a chance, I was too busy.
Hey, Tom.
I think we can take a look at number twenty eight. If you want to table on and and split it up kind of like how you're alluding to, just. Entering city administrator into it and then looking at, like he said, and it could be just a reissue of this down the road. Where it's just to clean up a language and when you get a chance to read more, but. See that shit, it's not really changing the policy, it's just. Reformatting, for lack of a better term. I'm fine with that, with twenty eight. I'm I'm fine moving forward with that. I mean, what questions do you have on that, Mary Ann?
Um, it was some more, I just didn't know if anyone else really read through it, and granted, it's all a new thing, but there's a lot of. And I just don't know, I guess that was my. Um, like how you. How do you watch to make sure? That people aren't doing these things with that in for the.
Well, I can tell you.
How do you monitor?
Well, it's done by a mixture of, it's done by a mixture of working with our I T department. This department heads overseeing work product.
Dustin, can you give the council some background about where this, um, number twenty eight, the AI policy came from? Is that something you developed from scratch or did you?
No, I worked with our attorney and that's based on what they are telling us at the city, the city. Uh, Cynthia went to city training and she was told, uh, based on some, this is in response to some of her suggestions and training that she brought.
I watched a a webinar with our, um, about employment with our. City attorney. And the last topic, they brought up several topics, and the last topic they brought up is that cities should have an AI policy. Um, I can tell you, as far as I know, nobody in city hall is using it. I don't know about the maintenance department, but.
Um, I can tell you, as far as I know, nobody in city halls using it. I don't know about the maintenance department, but. We, this is not anything that we've ever used. Dustin mentioned that he has used it before. And so then he came up with this thought.
And I work directly with our attorney, uh, firm, uh, attorney firm based on her. Feedback and I'm also working on other stuff based on her feedback too.
Aaron, uh, Nathan at Simmons, Brian was the one that did the webinar.
We use a lot of it, I know just enough to sound like an idiot, but, uh, it helps with like summary, summarization of data for helping bring out some of that. In a quick way, I have, you know. Uh, Dr. Brendan, they're really using it heavily at the hospitals, had to help summarize, you know, longstanding patient history to kinda help. Get a short and quick, down dirty of what, you know, the, the patient's history is and what to expect and. Help a lot of thought, so I think. Using that is, uh, it's basically another tool to use. But it also can be.
Legally speaking, anything done on city servers is not. We own the data.
Doesn't it talk about personal use too? I just wanna make sure that it's something that we can monitor.
I mean, it's not foolproof. I mean, I don't know that I can monitor every bit of data, but it's just a tool.
Who monitors or, I mean, how do you, 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 you put an AI. Policy out there, then it has to be discussed with all the city employees.
Yes.
So someone has to be the expert in that.
It'll be me and department heads, uh, so the way it's written, based on what the attorney has. Told me is that it's between me and department heads. And if somebody chooses to use it, it's fine. I mean, there's plenty of acceptable uses in there, like using it as a tool and whatnot. They just, the employee has to learn their boss. So if I'm using AI, I would, I do, I would have to let you know. Which is a nice tool to have.
And then how do you monitor that?
The only way through work product.
Do we have an IT department?
We are contracted.
Yeah, he's not here. You just like, if you have an issue, you call them.
Basically, you would just be making sure like.
Something that I don't, cause I don't know.
Chat GPT and all those people, you're just making sure they're actually being used to. Say, I was asking O'Brien to help follow my water usage for a while, they can. Take all that data and like whole summaries based off that like right away and then you can review that data. As opposed to telling it while you're at work, hey, write me another Twilight short story. You know, stuff like that. You're feeding it the right data, you're not using it for your own.
Okay.
Leg- legally speaking, where it becomes a problem, and I didn't know this. But according to my discussion with our attorney, who's Aaron. Uh, apparently some people are using it to make employment decisions. And, um, I never dreamed of using AI for that, but that kinda makes me nervous. So what she's more concerned about is using AI for unethical uses. Like using it to make a hiring decision or using it to discriminate against people. Um, there's a lot of things that people are using for that is not ethical. And so I think that's what. Or what, some of the things that she, the trends that they're seeing. The marketplace that they don't want.
That explains the language in here.
Yeah, so, so it sounds like AI is something that cities need to adopt a policy on. Uh, something like now or not really. But my question is, is who's the expert and who enforces it, who guides that guy?
Well.
Now, now, let, let me say, you, you've had a meeting or whatever one, but to me. You have to have, you have to be very adept with all of them. Know before we can put a policy out there that, you know, if you're the enforcer, you gotta. You gotta be smarter than the other person ultimately, right? And no use to now, so to have a policy right now to stamp something hypothetically tonight. What, what do we know? What do we, we don't, we don't know anything as of right now. We have a policy, but. We have a speed limit out there, but that doesn't mean people follow it, right? So.
By not having a policy, I don't have any teeth at all. So if, let's say in a couple of weeks, magically somebody turns out to have to violate this and it does create. Um, I don't have anything to enforce it with if I don't have a policy in place. It's a tool in my tool bag to help you enforce, uh, keep the city under legal. Trouble.
Don't use the AI, I just heard for possible AI infraction.
I mean, I don't mind inter- uh, training myself. I mean, they're always, uh, the ICMA, the professional organization, they're always offering. Uh, new courses and I can educate myself on it, so I can probably feel more comfortable. I take them anyway.
Shouldn't feel like we should maybe start with this and then we can always change it.
I would say start. We can, we can always edit it, like all of our policies, we can change it as, you know, we actually start to, if slash when we started using. You know, some AI tools to help with that, but. Giving us something to. Um, use as he said, as an enforcement mechanism is. Maybe start giving. Bunch of resumes for city clerk and. Someone who's got short timer syndrome doesn't feel like reading through them, so just scans them and says, hey. Hey, who should I hire?
I wouldn't feel like learning AI.
And then all of a sudden, oops. The robot's racist and we never need to do.
The only part that doesn't make sense to me is under ten, it says copy and paste and typing or submitting city content into the AI. Uh, AI chatbot. Since it's out there publicly, it can see it anyway. So.
That was attorney verbiage that I copied and pasted. But not into the chat line. But I see your point.
We make it public. Delays, but we'll see it anyway.
We could put something in there about. Um, city confidential.
Yes.
Um, content.
Yeah, cause this tells you can't put anything from the city in.
Well, that's.
Right?
Yeah, actually.
Con- confidential makes sense, cause unless you're paying for some sort of enterprise plan. They theoretically could use it to train on. But you wouldn't want. Theoretically. We'd be honored if they did, but.
I actually agree with that suggestion. Confidential seems like a better verbiage for number ten dot two.
So. We're tabling twenty-two through twenty-seven. Number twenty-eight is the AI policy. Do you want Dustin to? Make that change and bring it back or do you wanna prove it subject to that change? What would council like to do?
I'm probably approving subject to the change of ten point two adding confidential. For city content.
What? So you, you motioned?
Motioned for it with the, the change that we discussed.
Okay.
On ten point two. To add confidential city content.
So I need a roll call thing? Hi.
Hi.
Hi, hi.
Thank you.
With a note Dustin, I'd say start getting some expertise on it.
I understand.
Okay. Moving on to item twenty-nine, question, question concerning the administrator's goal setting, question Dustin, Mr. George.
The council, as you've been reading my emails and in our individual discussions, just for the record, what I submitted to you is proposals. I'm not sold on any of them. What I'm asking of you is guidance. I'm your first city administrator, I know my job description. Number one is strategic planning, which is a part of the mission statement request. But what I need more from you is just what is it you expect me to accomplish in the first six months, first year? I know some of you have suggested that I should just lay low, put my ambitions aside and wait for six months in London City. I don't mind. Um, if that's what you feel that I should be doing, then that's what I should be doing. I just don't want. To run into a situation that a year from now, I've gone a direction and y'all don't like where I'm going. I don't wanna be there, so I'd much rather check in with you when I first start, have some measurable goals. I know broadly that you want me to reduce hall and halls bills, administrative bills, I'm gonna say, I understand that. I also understand that project management and reducing reliance on vendors is a part of why I'm here. But, and I also understand the human resources and stuff like that, those are things that I know well. Um, I just wanna know what you want from me as your administrator. Measurable goals, hall and hall, that's it. And that it doesn't need to be decided tonight, you know, just some measurable goals so that I have some metrics that I can. Measure my performance on and that you, you have something to measure me on. Yes, strategic planning is nice, so if you want to head down that road too, but I understand that that's a month to month process. The bigger goal for me is just to have some measurables. So if you don't wanna do it tonight, at least when I request. That we, you have, that you, we, you think about it over the month and we do it on the eleventh. And I'm at your pleasure.
Dustin, you sent out emails to all the council members and myself. Have you gotten any feedback from that email?
Um, no, individually, yes, but, uh, I, I, I would just like some. Yeah, I asked for to reschedule it for next month because I know I'm kinda putting you on the spot. I just wanna start the process of A, having measurable goals for my first year here. So I know that I'm leading you down where you want me to go and B, eventually, because in my job description, strategic planning is number one. So eventually, we're gonna have to discuss some mission vision values, because that's. Strategic one. As I was taught. But that's not today. I know that's, that's gonna be months. And the process, I know some of you have given me feedback regarding, uh, um. Whether we should do town halls, individual stuff like that can wait. Uh, my main goal so far is to know what you want from me.
So are you suggesting we? Fulfill this discussion since the March we're in Dustin?
Well, uh, yes, I would like to schedule a, I just, I would like to schedule a goal-setting session for March.
Apart from the regular council meeting?
Uh, that's up to you. We can make it a part of the council meeting or we can do it separately. That's really up to you. I just want some established goals.
Just. So the. Strategic per. Priorities, strategic priorities and key initiatives, I think what you have in here. It may make sense, you're, you're talking about. Like goals, KPIs that you can hit. Maybe, well, this is just me thinking, I, I guess, I don't know. What a realistic number would be. So my. My thought would be. No- knowing what. Knowing what the conversations have been. Maybe take a stab at it, here's what I think I can accomplish, and maybe we look at that and say. Does that make sense? It doesn't, just given the. The areas that we've expressed. You know, individually as a group. Kind of where you started off.
Okay.
Well, and I would just take it a little, you know, if you're, to me, you're kinda talking about two different things.
Yes.
Um, measurable goals and what you're to accomplish and then city vision and, you know, long range strategic plan. You know, the state of Iowa allows. Uh, when employees wanna talk about their specific responsibilities, goals, um. To, uh, if the employee wants, they can go into closed session, so you might wanna have a separate. Session that discusses that aspect of it.
Sure.
Um, and I would just. Remind you that in March, you already have three council meetings and a meet volunteer meeting, so.
Well, so maybe. I would, my, my personal opinion is either. Attach this. Close if you prefer, um, because then it allows us all to talk. Uh, and go over stuff. At one of those three meetings. I would wanna do a close, me personally, closed session. That way we talk, A, about strategic planning. B, what's working, what's not working, what we wanna see for improvement, what we like, you know? Sit down, talk about, you know, day to day, month to month, year to year goals.
Sure.
And, and what we wanna. See you do and. How we, not necessarily how you'd like to do it, but where we, you know. Like improvement or everything is hungry to worry or somewhere between, so.
So, so then, are we allowed to go in post-session for that type of topic?
To talk about. Um, an employee's performance and not really the strategic goals of the city, but the employee, um.
Or performance, if you understand, but I thought we're talking goal setting here.
Well, that is a part of it.
Yeah.
Goal setting is performance related.
Yeah.
Objectives versus performance.
And, but you can only go into closed session if the employee requests.
Oh, I am.
Yes, if he wants to talk and they'll. Do that as well. So sometimes when people wanna talk about. Their job, they don't necessarily wanna have it on YouTube twenty-four hours later. I'm not saying, not, I'm saying it's just gonna be an ass-reening for ninety minutes or anything, but. Yeah, some people might wanna just prefer that in front, I don't know.
What is our meeting schedule after this meeting?
Um, March eleventh, so a month from now is your next regular. And then March twenty-fifth, you have. Two specials, um, one is just on the tax statement, it's a hearing, the next one is just to set the. Hearing, uh, for the full budget, but then we were going to do something with the water, aren't we Shane?
See bids on the nineteenth as well, and then the council will consider those bids with the county clear.
So we had eleventh, the what, the twenty-fifth?
The eleventh, the twenty-fifth and the twenty-fifth. So there's two.
Two on that.
Two on that now, and then you have.
And a meeting.
And a meeting, likely.
Which one was the meeting?
Twenty-fifth.
Just like we did last year.
Special meeting short, special meeting short, meeting. Yeah, we're all sitting around.
I was gonna say.
Back to some committee, committee members and stuff.
What?
Some committee members like me and Jean stuff are up here today.
Yes, absolutely, and the public. So, what do we wanna do with number twenty-nine?
Executive session or closed session?
Do we wanna do it on the eleventh? So we're gonna run a bunch of meetings out?
Eleventh is our regular meeting, correct?
I'm gone over spring break, I'm back at the twenty-fifth meeting, then I'll be done. The name of the guest on the week or not? Be better, all councilmen present, let's say.
April it is. April it is.
April.
Unless we wanna do it on the twenty-fifth.
Those are two short, mid letting and then what's the other one?
The first ones are hearing on that tax statement. And then set, and a resolution to set the full budget hearing date. Of entry.
We're also receiving bids on the nineteenth, talking about those.
Yes.
Do you wanna wait that long to do that? Is like concerning.
Well, I guess maybe check the calendar and get back to. When your exact time series you're gonna be gone is and that allows other people to see. If they got anything going on specifically when. So I know you probably lean toward doing something in the month of March and not waiting till April.
I don't think we wanna wait very long.
I mean, you can still have something that you burn.
I am gone like two weeks, I have to think.
You wanna do that, just look at your schedule and then.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Since you can disseminate that information, we can go from there.
So I'm putting the latter part of February as a possibility. All right.
Thank you, council.
We'll move on to item number thirty. Um, purchase order from Vanworth for meters, Brian, gonna talk about this one?
Yeah, this is, uh, just, uh, regular meter purchase. We might pass that down, so over here is for the technicality, for you guys to okay it. Uh, there's several meters out there that are past their, um, what they read, uh, said that their life was gonna be. And how long those are gonna last, I don't know, so I'm just acquiring meters and it allows to add them on hand, so we can start replacing them when they start failing.
Are you still in trouble getting, are you still having troubles finding meters?
No, apparently they're coming.
There's an issue with the water meter at, at the house, it's on the city. Corrected by any damages.
Uh, the damages, I don't know, but the meter we replace, they're responsible from going in, but if there's something going on with the meter, we either shut the water up so they can get a plumber to fix it or whatever, but when we get to, uh, investigate what kind of meter it is, if it's a really old style, it's they're supposed to go ten years, so if they're more than ten years old and it's a certain style that they originally put in when they started doing the meter reading system that we have now. We just, now's a good time to replace it cuz it's gonna fail, you know, could be tomorrow, so. A lot of those that we've been running into, uh, any complaints or issues where something's leaking and, hey, we need to fix a valve in the house, can you shut the water up? Yeah, what kind of meter do you got? Well, come look, and then we find out it's an old one, so we swap it out because we know that it's coming up, it's gonna have a problem, so. We're slowly rotating some of them out, but I know there's at least I'm guessing at least a couple hundred of them that are. I'm just trying to acquire as much as I can now, we'll have them on hand, and then we don't have to have one big slug of them. And I know where we're gonna get the money from, do it.
Part of your, if there's damage, if they didn't have the heat on the house, that they broke like that, the tenant has.
Yeah, if it's a failure on the layer part that caused it, then yes, they paid for it.
Brian, what material are the new meters made of?
Uh, there's brass housing meters, um, the ones that we're replacing are the plastic housing ones. Yeah, and then just what the big problem is, is the electronic reader part has a ten-year battery life. Or maybe past ten years, we don't know how fast they're gonna go. So if we have to replace the meter, otherwise the reader part may only be what needs to be replaced, so. I'm having both on hand as much as we can. And then a couple of the more, uh, bigger meters for, uh, railroad speed for one, depending on what direction we're gonna go in there, and then have one on hand, cuz we have a few businesses that have that, so. So we can have something on hand to get them back up and running here.
Any other questions for Brian? Hearing none, need a motion to approve this purchase? All in favor, please? Number thirty-one, special house motion on road chip and ceiling quote, Lynn?
This is our yearly seal coat, uh, estimates that we got, and we got one from Belling and Perry Road, number thirteen. And for the most part, it looks like road builders, um, just a bit cheaper. I recommend all of them we got.
So, I guess same as last year, like what's the total this is probably gonna reach?
No idea, um, we have, um, what do we have in there, I think eighty-five?
Yeah, eighty-five, it's in the budget.
Up to budgeted, so we usually wait till springtime to kinda see what the roads do and what they look like. I don't know what needs repairing, but later in the year as, as the temperature is warm up.
And the quote with all the streets listed in the totals will come back to council for action, so you can remove something, yeah. The rate, this is really kinda the rate.
Any other questions for Lynn? Not, need a motion?
What he said, say.
All in favor? Thank you, number thirty-two, Lynn, on road crack ceiling.
Yeah, this for the crack ceiling, um, last few years, we've been doing portions of town just depending on what budget and it allows, we have, I've been there, so this is the same thing, just for me, that rate, um, had we still may not do any, but I'm hoping to do some streets this year, when I can see as many as I know.
Any questions for Lynn?
Is Cleesner different than Bray Road Builders?
Their sister companies, same owner, I believe, maybe Marion did, don't, even though I think it's a single owner, China, they're good one.
Oh, that's what they call Cleesner.
They, so, one guy owns it, and it's two separate, one does that, and one does, uh,
Any questions for Lynn? Need a motion, please?
I'll make a motion for Cleesner Construction.
Say.
All in favor?
Aye, aye, aye.
Thank you. Item number thirty, thirty-three, um, we're setting a public hearing date for the fiscal year twenty-six tax statement. This is one of those March twenty-fifth, short special meetings. For, um, just need a motion to reset that public.
Exciting.
We'll call, please.
Aye, aye, aye.
Thank you, can we go on to item number thirty-four? Um, special continues on the budget. Then here's you, have to comment very carefully.
Yep, so, um, usually I have more than three business days between the budget special and this meeting, so I, you know, I'm not done going through, but I, um, tried to start. The first thing I want you to look at and give me input, um, I'm just making a suggestion, not a decision. So, um, this is the, uh, start of the local option sales tax report for fiscal twenty-six. And you can see we have a contractor work, we had twelve thousand five hundred in here for paint striking and sweeping. Um, you remember that I mentioned that the road use balance is as high as I've ever done here? Um, so I moved that to road use, but we can put it back in loss if you want, and I left uh, the eighty-five and the twenty-five in here, again, we can move those out if you want. Um, then at least is, has for the mini excavator has been paid from here all the time. The Feder Field, the guys tell me this will be the last year, they'll, they'll have that done, so I'll take into the third year. I did, uh, you told me take the amphitheater out, I did show you that it's in here and you have enough money to not bond for it, if you wanna still consider it. I put in fifty thousand to go into the library savings towards their, um, addition project. We kinda mentioned that during Thursday night. The city hall bond payment, uh, we, um, had been paying that from, um, loss for a while, and then the fire department transfer. With that proposal, based on our estimate, and remember, we are about fifty-one thousand less than our estimate than the state of Iowa said we could count on, you know, we wanted to be conservative. Um, we still have the hundred thousand reserve balance and then another five thousand unassigned.
Um, Cynthia, we talked about approving the, um, library today, so funding-wise that money needs to come from somewhere, we need to talk about funding for that, we just said buy it, so.
Right, when it was suggested, um, whenever that was, um, it was suggested that they have a CD that is more than enough to make that purchase, but that's up to council, what, where you want that to come from? We didn't really talk about it, we just said city was gonna buy it, so I don't know if they were under the impression that it was coming out of their pocket, but
Right.
You know what I mean? We didn't talk about the financing to do that, right?
Oh, they're gone, I guess we'll email that it came out of that seat.
Well, they, I mean, that was discussed that night, it was first suggested, and it was also discussed at that meeting with Dustin and John, so I think they're aware. I, yes, I wouldn't go as far as to say that I think they like it or agree with, but I think they're aware of this. They do not like it or agree with it. And that I would think would be in the current budget, not twenty-six. And this beginning balance is assuming that we spend everything in our current budget, which I don't think we've ever done that, because I've been here, but.
Um, waiting for Mike to suggest some loss going to fireworks?
Well, I was gonna say we're in the amphitheater and then suggest lost money goes to fireworks, so she was half right. But she also had the most important half right. Oh, thank you, yeah. You're good to go, we're, you're gonna be a hellish job.
You guys, that's for a while, I'm sorry.
I was kinda thinking the same thing. Put fireworks in the locks.
So I have, I have a question too, she was talking about, um, how much surplus do we, if she takes the painting and striking, sweeping out of the road use, she said we still have, how much slash do we still have left in there? Cause we have twenty-five for street repairs and eighty-five for road work here. Yeah, I mean, I'm just wondering if we, if we need to shift, oh, at least maybe the twenty-five back to that fund, then we can use this for something else, cuz you can't, you have to use road use for road use, right? So we can't.
Well, and that becomes a question is, um, how much tips?
Eighty-five is, I mean, at an average, so, that wasn't really nothing. Last time we came, got things around, it worked out good, we had a pretty fine year, so we felt anything that were bringing them. Let's say, who knows, three, but seventy-one.
Yeah, we were wanting for that.
Oh. Um, how much more, how much money we have in the?
So, um, public work starts on page twelve. Um, the first part is general fund, which probably doesn't have any, any really except for one-fourth of the skid loader lease. Then lost, um, which has eighty-five and the twenty-five. And then the twenty on the next page, on page thirteen, so a hundred and thirty coming from loss and public works. And then the road use starts at the one-ten fund on page thirteen and goes to fourteen. We look on page fifteen. The current balance, um, and, I'm sorry, mine is updated a little bit last minute today, so you may take notes if you don't. I printed you guys as like at two-thirty, but then I kept working. Current balance in road use is four oh nine seven sixty-four. The projected revenue is four hundred thousand. And right now, your total expenses with moving that twelve-five, or fifty there, twelve-five hundred, I'm sorry, is four twenty-one nine sixty-three, so just barely over our projection of four hundred thousand. I mean, you, you could consider, um, if you wanna wait to see the street list and then, you know, consider adding or, um, you can take more out of lost or more out of road use, cuz you really have eight hundred and nine in road use to work with, um. This is just my personal opinion, is that it's nice to do some lost projects that are visible, you know what I mean? Well, maybe more visible than more than just an hour, and I love fireworks, I really do, um. You know, you seal coat a street and yeah, that has to be, but that's not a very big show piece, you know, to get people to vote to continue loss, you know what I mean? But, that's just my.
Thought was your suggestion, something?
Yeah. And, you know, uh, we can take that, you can certainly take the amphitheater out, it's your, your property, but if you wanted to leave it in and use some of your hundred and five thousand left over, you could still fund the fireworks up to the normal level, cuz we have seven, we only need five, right, to go up to twelve. So you're real close to the amount available even with everything as it sits. Um, and there's nothing to say that this the, like I said, we are fifty-one thousand below what the state is recommending we should plan on. They're recommending that we do a thirteen-something percent increase in loss, and we did not work that into our estimate.
So Marion, you're thinking, because we essentially have four hundred grand in road use sitting there, cuz after our expenses and revenue, we're still gonna have roughly four hundred, so you're thinking, you wanna take like the road contractor work out of loss, take that eighty-five out of our four hundred balance?
Yeah, I would be more inclined to just like Cynthia suggested, shifting some of the road use expenses back to the road use fund, since that's all you can use it for.
Right.
And then that allows us to use that money for other
Sure.
Other things.
Yeah, your loss is any lawful purpose, so you certainly have more.
We don't have to allocate, you know, really say what we're gonna do with it right now, that leaves that money and that funds for other things as they come up.
How much money do we have budgeted for the French drain work? That's all, I know it's not a good issue. Zero. Not really road use.
Well, did you say not road use?
But there's really, the only fix of that we have to, so we have to really plan it.
So you don't have anything planned in the twenty-five thousand that we see in the street repairs there for that?
That's more of the movements, cracks.
So we could shift the road contractor work or this route back to the road use fund?
Yes, you could, and still.
I would say let's do that, because then it gives us, it gives us flexibility to spend money on any lawful purpose. And if we don't, then we're stuck.
So you want that hundred ten thousand? Yes, I, I mean, I agree, I'm just making sure.
I would say, it doesn't, I mean.
It sounds, I mean, it's road use.
Right.
Cuz, yeah, I mean, it shouldn't be.
It went, it was in there probably because things were thin.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Put it back, what it was.
And worst case, you can always go back and take something, we would need to. But I think it belongs, at least then it earmarks it where it belongs.
So then, with you lose those, then you have a hundred and fifteen thousand not allocated with everything listed there. If you take the amphitheater off, you have two hundred and thirty thousand unallocated.
What a show.
Plus the hundred thousand, any values. What did you say?
What a show.
You've got five of twelve over the home. I mean, is, is twelve still thin, is?
Twelve was thin, because it, it's
Because you have twelve to fourteen, to fifteen, and costs continue to go up, so we're, I'd say.
Fifteen is what I was thinking, we're just, go bigger, go.
It used to be our trailer that would cut down, it was small.
So we're caught up to today's terms.
I would suggest that you fund the entire twenty. I would suggest that you fund the entire twenty five show at fifteen thousand from lost.
I would too.
And then just leave the savings, let it build up and see what it does next.
Next, start the next year.
Give you another years.
I mean, you said you had some equipment that was dated too?
The, the question is not dated, we're starting to use some of the vendors' equipment. Okay, um, our equipment, it's in panels, it's obsolete, the panels, we have two panels, so Bill Berry, one panel, so. Fire department, one panel is pretty much done. So we had a backup system, if something failed, we could switch from one, plug it all in to the other. Now if one fails, we're out, but maybe don't have more to show, but.
Okay. So if you take. Add fifteen thousand in fireworks, remove the two lost. Then you're at a hundred thousand unassigned and a hundred thousand planned balance with everything listed there. And again, if you take. The amphitheater off, then you've got another.
Don't have to earmark that one hundred.
The last hundred, we try not to, the other hundred thousand, I mean. I guess unless you have something in mind that you're saving up, or I don't know why you wouldn't do a project, but that's, that's you guys.
As, as we decided tonight, we can wait till next fall, that, that plus hundred. Okay.
You could, you could always do a budget amendment, you know, so whatever figures I'm gonna plug in. By the March meeting, then that's when we've gotta do the, your hearing notice, so you can lower expenses after that.
Next one is the final number.
Yeah. Um, but again, you can do a budget amendment come your, the line meeting, so. This is your best guess. So you're, you don't have to make a decision, if you make a decision, you can change it, you know.
Yeah, we don't have to spend the excess money tonight, we can leave the amphitheater on here and figure out if we wanna do it, don't wanna do it, but. I just need, we need to get the money shifted back to that fund with us. Cause you can't.
So add the fireworks, take out the road use stuff, is that what I'm seeing or hearing, the changes that sound?
Sixty six percent, so correct so far.
All right.
How much of the statue of Joe caught? From Bronham Sam.
Uh-oh, I didn't mean to close that whole thing.
Top me is yours.
Pick all these pennies that we aren't gonna be able to use anymore and melt them down.
No, it becomes collectored items and those will cost ten dollars.
Like three times as much.
Okay, um, again, I think everybody's got a spreadsheet in front of you, and. Unless somebody stops me, I'm gonna just stop at the changes that I made and make you aware. Uh, but if you wanna talk about anything on any page, you let me know. So the first change that I have highlighted is on page four, and you do not have this on your sheet. The street participation line, uh. Public Works, um, two ten forty seven eleven has twenty five thousand in the current. I put five hundred and fifty eight, four hundred in there as revenue, that is, if we do the seventy six. Three hundred and sixty from Iowa land and our estimated one ninety eight, four hundred, oh, from, uh, Lynn County.
Which, what page are you, what are you talking about?
Page four.
You don't have.
Street participation, the line that has twenty five thousand in the current.
I would, you know.
Right, five fifty eight, four hundred, which is three sixty from Iowa land and one ninety eight, four from Lynn County. That's our estimates for their participation in seventy six.
Cynthia, I think that three sixty or four twenty, cause I think it was three sixty, seventy six and sixty four.
Oh, okay, great, all right, so four twenty. Instead of the five fifteen? Um, no, sixty thousand more than five fifty eight, which is what, six eighteen four hundred? Did I add that right?
Three sixty one.
Sixty thousand and five fifty eight, four hundred. Six eighteen. Okay, so that's what should be on that line, and you will have that on your March one, but. So the Iowa land contribution of four twenty, not three six. Okay, moving on. Number six, I just have a note, uh, where we showed the lost revenue, uh, that we're showing four seventy five, but that with the state estimated would be five twenty six, four sixty nine. If you wanted to note that, you know, nobody knows for sure what it'll be, but that's their estimate. Page seven. I had filled in the possible bond amounts, and we met with Maggie at Spirit Financial on Monday. Uh, so there's no way she was gonna have the information to us today, but by March she will. So the pickleball, the fire department, um, she thought of the listing of the projects, the fire department addition would be the only non-essential. Regular, um, general, um, corporate bond. But it would be an urban renewal bond possible, and it's also under the reverse referendum limit, so those were both positives. Fire truck. Uh, the bridge. And Dustin, uh, was looking into exactly how that cash flow works for the bridge, you know? I wouldn't think we'd have to borrow all of it, if we, if it's, uh, we spend some, then get a reimbursement, spend some and get a reimbursement. And then the intersection project, seventy sixth avenue, and it's got that. Offset, and so we wouldn't be borrowing that whole amount either. And then the two hundred and twenty five, I was gonna look into that sewer that I thought we still had set aside. Well, we talked about that sewer before, we've already transferred it to other sewer projects, so that is not available. So I have to let Maggie know that that would be on the, the bond also. And then, uh, the transfers in, I don't have filled in yet. Page nine. The fire department, I raised their, uh, first three expense lines based on the thought that I thought you were going to approve her, uh, requested change. And then because I raised those, I lowered the equipment line too. So the, their top line is seventy five thousand now, fifty six, twenty one and twenty nine hundred. And then their equipment line, which remember that's the catchall, just to get them to the right total, is now one oh eight, three eighty two. Their, their total budget did not change. The next change, page twelve. It's just I have highlighted that we removed the twelve five from the loss from the painting and sweeping. So now based on this discussion, that eight five thousand, make that zero, and the twenty five thousand, make that zero. And then the lost fund for roads, bridges and sidewalks is zero. That's all on the bottom of page twelve. Page thirteen, um, contractor work, I've gotten the twelve five, I will add the eighty five thousand onto there. And then add the twenty five thousand on the repair line, which is on the next page. Page fourteen. Everybody still with me? Okay. Continuing on page fourteen, if you remember, I said, oh, I didn't do any kind of, um, bump for, uh. January of twenty six to June of twenty six for the administrator, so I had done a five percent. So you'll see four different places that, um, that. So that twenty five thousand came twenty five seven, and then FICA and IFRS changed based on that, the nineteen sixty six and twenty four to twenty six. And then we talked about, uh, the new clerk estimating at twenty five an hour rather than twenty, um, so, uh. That, um, the third part in road use went up, uh, twelve, two hundred, nine thirty three and eleven fifty two. Uh, page sixteen, um, is that fifty thousand from lost being transferred into some sort of wider savings or CD to build up for, uh. Page nineteen. Now we're in parks lost, and this is where I left, it's not really changed, I left the amphitheater in when I saw that I thought the funds were available. Um, again, that's, well, I think leave it in there for now at least. And you'll see, I've gotta come up with some projected fund balances as of June twenty five, I just said, didn't have time to do those counts. Page twenty one, again, the administrator changes on those three lines, twenty five seven and the nineteen seventy and twenty four, twenty five. And again, the top of page twenty two, the first line, all four of those lines changed. Um, page twenty four. This is the capital projects fund, so this is what, you know, before we were shown debt, um. Issuance, this is actual where we're gonna expend, so I put in the, the bridge, the intersection, seventy six. And then I still, I have not got to the water section, I will get some information from Shane about his best guess of how much it's done by you. How much will be in the next fiscal year, although we're never a hundred percent correct, hopefully we're close. So, uh, the water section will be filled in, in March. Page twenty five, I, um, put the sewer lining base two and two hundred and twenty five. The fire department addition three thirty in the pickleball for six hundred thousand. Now, page twenty six, we're into water, and the first three lines, the wages, FICA and IFRS changed due to the admin and the clerk changes. They're not separated out, um. And the reason that they're separated out in road use in general is because the annual report wants those totals separate, and the road use report wants those separate, so we track them separate. Um, okay, page twenty seven in the water, line, equipment, six hundred, eight, ten, sixty five, oh, five. Is now thirty one thousand, um, Brian added thirteen thousand for a valve, that's this exerciser. He has made, uh, one adjustment in water and I think three in sewer. These items were on, if you remember, in December, his department. Uh, budget requests. And he's, he's just new at budget, he didn't know to put those numbers in here or speak up Thursday night about them. So when he called me Friday and said, oh, when do we discuss those? And I said, last night. So I have, um, followed his instructions and added them. Now you'll see the operating expenses for water here, projected regular revenue is six seventy seven. And the operating expenses are seven oh four. So we're a little bit over. I don't know how accurate some of the estimates are. Whether Brian can sharpen his pencil, or, you know, um, or if we just kinda. You know, if we, um, what do I wanna say, if we estimated. Our collections to be double of what they were in December, if you remember, you didn't raise the rates until August. You know, so January to June is gonna be higher than July to August, so our revenue estimate might be low. Um, I can look at that again based on how much we're getting in each month and kinda maybe see if that needs to be adjusted. But again, I didn't have time to do that yet. Cause we're not that far off, that might just be in that calculation. Page thirty is sewer, and again, the first top three lines, wages and, uh, FICA and IFRS. Admin and clerk changes. And Brian's first line in sewer is the water wastewater treatment facility repairs, uh, sixty three eleven. He increased it by seventy thousand, fifty thousand for clarifier rehab and twenty thousand for fence. Then the next one, equipment maintenance repair sixty three fifty, he increased it by thirty nine thousand. Which is twenty one K for mixers and eighteen K for aeration mode. I kind of agree with Ryan, feel free to speak up if that's wrong.
No, you're right.
Okay. Other equipment is the last adjustment Brian sent, uh, sixty five oh five, he added twelve thousand for half of utility location equipment. Was the other half in water?
Yeah.
Oh, is that what that adjustment was? Okay. All right, but on page thirty one, this is a little more off, and again, I didn't look at the rates, but. We show regular sewer revenue of five thirty four seven and regular sewer expenses, but seven twenty six, which is a big difference. So. We either need to. Find more money or spend less. I mean, the, the current balance is four hundred thousand, so you could certainly fund. You know. Clarifier rehab or fence or the mode, you know, so those improvements, I think he added a hundred and twenty one thousand. You know, you could fund those with your beginning balance, those aren't regular, you know, like salary expenses.
The clarifier and the fence for the lease, public private use, and that can be gone.
Okay.
I just.
But even if you take a hundred and twenty one thousand.
Easy.
If you take the hundred and twenty one thousand off the seven twenty six, you're still at six oh five to five thirty four, so there's still a gap there. So I guess I would suggest that I look at revenue, Brian, look at expenses, and maybe we come up with a, a recommendation at your March meeting, if we can. Close that gap. I don't think, uh, the six month adjustment will help us in sewer, cause if you remember, we actually lowered sewer rate. We shifted some of the sewer money to sewer debt and water debt, but we actual lowered, um. The sewer rate, I believe, so. I'm probably not gonna put much there in the revenues. And I believe those are the only changes. Unless there's something I'm overlooking. That I was supposed to do and I didn't. And again, before March, I'll look at, you know, general fund bound, beginning balance and revenue versus expenses. Um, I haven't had a chance to do that yet.
Is included the garbage increase, correct?
Yes, I had already presented that in, yeah. And it was my understanding you wanted to keep that same gap approximate, they're going up to twenty two. I guess we could discuss, do you want me to write the ordinance to? Twenty three forty, twenty three thirty five, the dollar thirty four and more now.
That's not affected till July, correct?
But we usually pass it in March and April, usually we take a couple of months to do it. So we can get it in the newsletter that it was passed.
And usually do multiple reviews of it.
Twice, two usually. So, you know, we could wait to March to decide that, but if you let me know now, I can, you know, get that. In the works.
Yeah, we talked about this one, and I was doing that.
Yeah, but do we wanna do? Twenty three thirty four or twenty three thirty five or?
You have twenty four ten on your doggy.
I do.
You're posing twenty four ten.
Oh, yeah. Why would I do that? That, that would be adding more of a. Oh, no, it wouldn't either, I'm sorry, I'm reading the dollar thirty four, their increases that are gap. Okay, yeah, never mind, I've already done that.
Like you just said, Gavin.
Yeah, are you, and I'll verify that, are you okay with the twenty for ten?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I changed them the same gap, yeah.
Yeah, sorry, I was looking at the wrong number. I don't have anything else for budget other than, so remember. I don't have anything else for budget other than, so remember um we have uh the levy entered into the I D O M before March fifth. Lynn County will go out and uh pick up your um info, put it on their notice, they'll mail it by the fifteenth. We'll have our meetings on the twenty-fifth and then you'll do final approval April eleventh. And April thirtieth is there.
Okay, so are any questions for Cynthia? We'll move on.
Next. So I guess from the the last meeting, something you mentioned like the sound
Yeah.
and all that, you know, so because I was just burning, cause I was asking some questions about that, cause I don't, I don't know what I know that that original quote was high, but I don't know who would actually follow up on doing something else, but as you know, as a council, do we wanna put money aside for something in that realm? The website came up like a year ago. And then I had um sheriff coverage, I know that Joanne followed up with the sheriff, but I know there was some budget issues that and then I bring in a background checks. But I was curious, those are things that I don't know what the amounts are, I have no idea.
Just like lost, are you suggesting, Dan, or?
Anything, to be honest, cause like the, I I forget what the website piece was. Um sound was a little
The death quote that we had got and it was for audio and visual, you know, professional tier or whatever, it was forty-two thousand.
Yeah.
Um and I know we talked about if we took part of it out and I kind of think he thought, um he said the video part was a real small part of it, that the sound was most, had microphones, upgraded speakers, easy plug and play, it had a um if somebody rents a room, they could have a mic, you know, an announcement system and would tie into the speakers. Certainly, I think, you know, you could get another quote, I don't know whether if you make it less, it'll be less now that it's, you know, couple of years later, I I don't know.
Want to put money aside for things like that and then we can write about it later?
Well, specifically like what, I know you mentioned background checks, the website that are online or streaming technology.
And then the, I know the sheriff came up, but I think there's pretty much, I mean, we had fireworks conversation, but then, you know, the van wasn't at the parks and you know, just having more patrol, I know they didn't have any more hours to provide at that time. Uh we used to have
And when they went out of business, we tried, we could not find another business that was willing to provide that kind of service. And you know, I think for your sheriff contract, you could up the hours. I think they're already putting in more hours than they can, you know, they come at their fault.
If they're, if you call them, they're gonna come, whether they have that many hours or they're over or under time.
I think that just means you're gonna pay more money.
No, I I, yeah, I get that, but just the the physical presence of someone driving around might add some deterrence.
They're saying more patrolling hours as compared to call hours?
Yes.
Yeah, I don't know if they're willing to to dedicate, you know, specific trolling hours, like Signal Eight, you know, cause they were you know, just working for us or
So what you're saying is all the calls that they're already coming in for bar checks, health checks, welfare check. They're already well over seventy-eight hours, so if we bid one-hundred-and-twenty-five, they're still gonna be at that wherever our services.
That's what I worry, that you might not see an increase.
They used to.
That's probably what.
On their monthly report, they used to list the number of called plus service hours and it was under forty every month, like doubled what we were contracted for, so.
But they include like things like civil service.
They do include some things that are a little welfare checks.
Yeah, welfare checks, like things that are not related to what we would wanna, they include that in our total, so kind of, some of that kind of evens out.
Well, I guess the question is.
If you pay more, you're not necessarily gonna get more um There's no guarantee, which is why we haven't in the past kept on that up.
And I think when Signal Eighty-eight went out of business, we even contacted the sheriff to see if we could hire them, you know, like off duty or whatever. And certainly we don't have money sitting around to pay for a, to implement a police department. I think the last time we looked into that, remember we had a consultant come.
It was a million dollars just to give it off the ground. Uh the average for a uh police commissioner plus four officers, would they deemed an appropriate size labor costs of that was roughly about um four to five hundred thousand dollars, that doesn't include training, gas, equipment.
Jail cars.
How much we would pay to use the county jail, things like that, that would, and that was wow, like like eight years ago.
Yeah, it was a long time ago.
It was, that was a long.
Tim was still working.
Yeah, so it's been a long time. Wouldn't be uh citizens asked for that, so we had uh really brought in a consultant for that and it was way out of bar. They said it wasn't A, needed to be cost projected.
We wouldn't be at eight-ten.
No, we would not be at eight-ten, that's for sure. Um but to to that point is, you know, I say our, we don't have a police department, our property damage or our property crime is lower than, maybe you said do, our violent crime, it's basically none. Um and I encourage people to shoot first and ask questions later.
No.
Shoot over to your phone. Get through June to August and everything.
Get the kids back.
Yeah, when the kids eye the hands, that's the biggest problem, and I think that might be at this point, you know, neighborhood watch, things like that.
Cynthia, refresh my memory without me coming through this, did we put any money off in at all for upgrading sound or anything up here? No?
But now we have some local option sales tax money.
You can put a in either of here.
Sounds like it could be use, a good use for some of that, actually, at least worth looking into, but that's up to the council.
Is that a fun?
Well, you don't have to spend, it's there, you don't have to do it right now, that's my, that would be my take on that.
They'll answer questions, um if you're asked my opinion, I would say no to background check, online live stream service, more police, but we talked about upgrading the city's website, I know we looked at um uh according to party on their day.
Yeah.
But it was, yeah, it would have a migrate, there's a, there's large expense to migrate everything over to their plan.
Well, I would say one thing we're gonna have to budget for, if if we don't know what that looks like, is if the software the city is using is the cloud-based stuff is crapola, then, and it sounds like it is, and we have to migrate to a different software, that's not gonna be cheap, a lot of cost. I think that would be more important than a lot of these other things.
And when is that?
Well, they want us to sign up with them now, but but their cloud-based system isn't working. No city that's on it is balanced.
So we can continue on what we had.
Until the end of December, then we'll either have to at least sign a contract to convert or be with a new company, and I felt like the administrator and the new clerk should make the decision or at least be involved in the decision of what software, I mean, if you get a clerk with experience, they might know Banyan or want, you know, I know Haines of a lot of other companies now. Because a lot of clerks are jumping shit. Um you know, they might have experience in it.
So I think that's something we're gonna have to look at.
So you want to uh pencil that into maybe loss to software, yeah.
If the stuff, the cloud-based stuff is, she, like she said, they couldn't even get W-two's set out, yeah. I don't think we.
I don't think they're gonna fix their problems.
If they could have, they would have already.
I got an update from a town that I mentor that their salesperson called her Friday trying to get her to sign up again. And she said, I'm not gonna sign up till I hear that the cloud basis work, and he goes, well, I can tell you that we have stopped onboarding cities. We've hired new program engineers, they changed CEOs and they're committed to try to get it churned around.
They're calling her to get her to sign.
Right, they want your signature on the contract, but they're not onboarding right now, cause they don't know what in the world they're doing.
Which, which stinks, because there's nothing wrong with what we're doing right now, but they won't support it. So in other words, we could continue down the path that we're on after December, but then the first time we have a problem, they
No.
Oh, well then, see, it's even more of a thing. Yeah, okay, well, we have to, we need to look into that.
Hope you're gonna take notes.
Before we
Better get mentioned.
Um let's see, the nineteenth, they're having a webinar about it, so Stacy and I are listening to it, but we don't anticipate any great revelation.
Webinar for this company, what we're talking about?
Yeah.
How much more expensive is it to upgrade into this cloud basis?
Well, they already charged, they already increased our fees sixty-three percent this year, this December will pay them. And um if we don't sign the contract by March thirty-first and freeze that price, we know the price will go up, but they haven't told us how much. And they didn't tell us that December was going up sixty-three percent until the end of November.
So you spring them along and say you're still interested, see, are you involved?
Oh, I I I write out, tell them, I'm not signing until I sit, I hear from somebody that it's working. Um yeah, and that's not happening, that is not happening, um Elgin converted last February and their cash report hasn't found it since.
That's unacceptable.
Yeah.
Just saying.
Um there's um it's one of the cities down thirty. Um just like a month ago, he put on Thursday that he had, I think, ninety-six support tickets out there that hadn't been addressed. And there were many cities that said they did not have their W-two's generated in time or their ten ninety-nines. And uh just today, that guy from this, oh, that's Clarence, anyway, he said uh the U V is just, there's at least five issues he deals with every day. Billing, it takes three to four days to bill where it should take three to four hours. Just, I mean, it's the horror stories or Stacy just about has highs thinking about it.
Well, Cynthia, if I'm hearing council right, it sounds like we should add money in a couple of categories, but there new city software and potentially website. And we didn't hear any conclusion on the sound system.
Well, we could get a quote and then if we know what dollars.
We don't have to spend it, yeah.
Well, or you can not put it in right now, just have extra money in, you could amend if you decide to go with it.
Okay. Any other discussion on the budget? Very none, we'll move on to number thirty-five. Complaints list. Any questions? From the bills. I'll find the way to my to return. Let's move on, we'll circle back if we need to, need a motion to improve the complaints list, please. So so moved. We can do first and second, and then we'll wait for the all in favor. All in favor, pay I
I.
Paying the claims, Mike.
I am. Alright.
Number thirty-six, opportunities for this. Okay. Here's comments, I don't gonna remind everybody to march strength up, but I think we've done that a couple of times along the way, so that's all I got.
Everything I have, assuming to my report.
City Hall's closed tomorrow. May this guys get to work. I'll get with Cynthia on dates.
Oh, yeah.
I'm sure it'll reach out to everyone, yeah, everybody, yeah. Anything else?
Lynn, the shop will be open, I have a lot of ranges.
Okay, then I'm all concerned, please. All in favor. Thank you.
I'll be the only person. Emily will tell me.